Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 9th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. I'll ask the acting secretary to call the role, please.
Sure. Commissioner Schneider?
Here.
Commissioner Meredith?
Here.
Commissioner Baker is absent. Commissioner Ray?
Here.
Commissioner Oppone is absent. Commissioner Turner?
Here.
And Chairman Moffett is here, and we have a quorum.
Great. Maybe let the record reflect that Commissioner Moore is also absent.
Yes, thank you.
No problem. All right, thank you. First item is approval of the agenda. From the published agenda, we are striking site plan SLU number 23-14, Ryan Hadler. The applicant has decided not to go forward with the development. So if anyone's here for the come-and-go facility on proposal on 22 and Van Dyke, we won't be entertaining that. With that one correction, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the September 25th meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Good evening. We have three items on our main agenda. The first being an issue we saw a couple of weeks ago, conditional rezoning and site plan special land use, number 23-25, Ravinder Saney. And that's just for the Dunkin' Donuts that proposed at 21 and Shainer. We've had the public hearing. So how this will work is I'll have the petitioner come up and offer, or the representative, what changes they've made to the plan, what they've, if any. I'll then open it up to the public if you want to comment on something new that's been proposed. If you want to talk about traffic, you want to talk about other stuff, we've covered those issues. And so, but if there's something that they're proposing now that wasn't proposed before, and you want to offer a comment on it, you're free to come up, okay? But if folks start telling me what a great guy he is, or people start telling me how bad the traffic is, okay, I'm just gonna bring it back to the board and we'll make our recommendation decision. Fair? Understood? I see nodding. Good. Okay, with that, the petitioner or representative, anyone who talks, name and address. After you're done talking, then sign in.
Mr. Chairman, planners, Joseph Faglica from Gateway Engineering, how you doing? So here we are tonight with a revised plan for the Tim Horton on 21 and Shainer. So there was, two weeks ago, we met and we, you know, we heard some of the neighboring complaints and we went back. We kind of anticipated this happening last, but it was too late by the time we had a chance to talk to your planner and make the revisions. So we went ahead and prepared those revisions at that time. So again, let's talk about what is it that we're proposing? So it's the same building that we proposed last time. It's a 1,600 square foot building. Last time, one of the variances that we were seeking was brick variance. So we'll get through the easy one. And we went ahead and converted any of the EFIS into brick. It wouldn't be showing on your plans because those plans are prototypes that come from Tim Horton corporate, but it shows on the renderings and it shows on our application. It's gonna be a dual-tone brick. They have a darker gray brick and a lighter brick. I'm not sure if you can see it on the rendering, but basically, it's gonna be pretty much all brick, except a little bit in the front on Van Dyke, I mean on Shainer and on 21 Mile would be a metal, some type of metal siding that they use. We also were able to push the building towards 21 and towards Van Dyke. And by doing that, we were able to avoid any variance for the setbacks next to the residential. So we do now offer 25-foot full setback on either side of the residence. We have a pretty aggressive landscaping plan. We talked in detail with your planner about it. And we're also offering a vinyl screen wall, six-foot high. It's the same type of screen walls that they put near highway abutments to, you know, mitigate any of the sound. So those two variants also went away. The only variance at this point that we are seeking is a Shainer building setback. We're encroaching the Shainer setback from the center road to our building three feet. And the loading and unloading setback, your ordinance calls for 35-foot setback from any property line. We are 25 feet away. So we're seeking a 10-foot setback. Now, after talking to the planner, due to our high landscaping and our wall, she didn't feel that was a big, big issue for that type of setback.
She'll let us know that.
You know, she'll let you know. Other than that, I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay. There was an issue last time, there was a representation that there was a lot of communication that occurred with the neighbors.
So...
And that apparently didn't happen. So why don't you run through that?
No, no, actually, so, yeah, let me, let me, so, I actually wasn't able to attend that last week, I mean, two weeks ago. And I had a meeting with one of the landowners. I met with him previously. It was at least three days previous. He did not attend the meeting, his wife did, because he was out of town and I was, you know, I was at one of the universities teaching. And he was the most effective gentleman. He's the one that's right, you know, we have a southern border, you know, with him. He's got the most property. And based on my communication with him, we went ahead and, you know, increased the landscaping. And, you know, I kind of saw what was the issues, and I tried to mitigate that at best. Last Saturday, we sent out a letter to the people that are in that area, whatever you provided to us. And four people showed up. We were at the property at 11:00 and I think three or four people showed up. I think three people showed up. And we had a, you know, we had a great meeting with them, you know. Obviously, the issues that they have have nothing to do with what we can offer for solution. They were talking about people going through their subdivision, you know, to cut through because they don't want to stop at the light, you know. That's something I can't address. And then, you know, obviously, the traffic issue on Shainer. But as far as, you know, I told them that as far as buffering, you know, we're trying to do our best. We have a very aggressive landscaping plan with the wall. There's some trees there that we're gonna maintain. There's a, I believe it's a pretty large walnut, and we, you know, we're gonna keep it. There's no reason for us to remove it. It's a beautiful tree. So I felt that the things that we were able to address, we addressed. We also made the whole site one way now. And although we have enough space to make a two-way road, we decided to do it one way, just in case the stacking, you know, we add some more stacking by doing that. So there's no issues. So we tried to address everything that was, except, you know, obviously, traffic issues on Shainer. I mean, that's something that, that's just a major through here, so, or bypassing through their subdivision. I kind of looked at it the other day to see how big it's pretty, I mean, we're talking about at least a quarter mile down from our site, there's an entrance to the subdivision. So I don't see them cutting through there to come to the Tim Horton because it didn't make sense. They would have to cross, you know, three lanes of traffic, get on the middle lane, and then come back in. It would make more sense for them to come the right way. So I didn't think that was an issue that we would be able to resolve or, you know, make it alleviate their issue that they have today. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
To the planner, again, it's kind of hard with what we have to, I mean, she has recommended, has indicated that the landscaping plan is aggressive. Would an eight-foot wall be a better, or is that too much? Would that be too much?
It would be up to the discretion of the planning commission.
Well, I'm asking your, you're asking your opinion as to mitigate a little bit more of the...
I think that that would be a good idea.
Okay.
I think they, that would be their choice, you know, the neighbors.
Yeah. And what's your client?
Yeah. We don't have an issue either way. We didn't propose it because the ordinance is six feet. So that would be another variance, but...
Aren't they allowed to, was it variance?
That was for light manufacturing. I looked into it, and it was for light manufacturing that you're allowed to go up to eight feet.
Okay, so not, okay, so we'd have to add that. Okay.
Doesn't make a difference to us.
Okay, fair enough. To the board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
From what I saw last time, I would appreciate what you've done, moving the building northeast, getting it away from the residential homes as much as you can, making it a one-way. Site may help with traffic flow. Question I have, maybe overthinking it a bit, how are you gonna control people who come in the property and go the wrong way?
Well, it's gonna be, you know, the thing with these, we do quite a bit of Tim Hortons. And it kind of looks like the first week is when they have all the issues, because they have to get the, you know, but the people that come to it is always pretty much the same type of, you know, we just finished one in Madison Heights, and we had a very tight drive-through. And the first week, we had some issues where people were confused. We're gonna put signaling. We're gonna put, you know, signs on the floor. We're gonna say one-way only. And, you know, we're hoping that people will follow that. And eventually, I think they will catch up to it and they'll figure out. Other than putting signaling and, you know, signs that says, you know, right lane only, there's not much else unless we want to put somebody out there to monitor.
I get it, but I have a question, Julie. On their, their renderings in the plan do not show what they're providing here tonight. So don't they have to amend this before it goes to the board with the proper drawings of the building and the material?
As far as signage?
No, as far as the material composition of the buildings, because they have EFIS still in their plan.
Correct. They would have to correct that.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Meredith.
Question on the, we're gonna, if we approve this tonight, we're approving two variances. One is for the 35 feet...
Potentially three, now that I just threw in the eight-foot wall. So it'd be, so it's, right, 35 to 25 on the loading, and then the three-foot into the easement, into the Shainer easement, pushing it farther away from the neighborhood.
And the second one was, I know...
Was the parking, well, then the eight-foot fence, the loading area, the loading, because their loading area is within 25 feet of the lot line, and ordinance calls for 35. Right?
Just a note of clarification. So the loading and unloading, it needs to be 45 feet from the residential. They're providing 25 feet. So it's a little bit larger variance. But however, the, from the western property line, it's completely screened with the dumpster.
How often do, maybe to the petitioner, how often do you load, how often does, is this, and a name, address?
Mr. Chairman, twice a week.
Okay. But name and address for the record. I need you to...
Ravinder Saney, 2004 Carrier Court, Shelby Township.
Okay, thank you. All right, so twice a week. Ms. Caselli, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I think I need some reassurance on the drive-through stacking, and we're not, and we'll run through that again and make sure. I'm worried about stacking on Shainer Road coming south.
So we are showing, if you can see our plan, we are showing, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine stacking, right on the plan. But by making my right turn one-way only, and still maintaining the 24-foot set, you know, width, potentially, you can actually now come down Van Dyke and have another six, seven cars stack. So by doing that...
Shainer.
Sorry. I'm Shainer, sorry. Sorry, Shainer. And by doing that, you know, we would, you know, mitigate any additional stacking that, you know, we don't have on site.
Thank you. That's what I saw, and I just wanted some assurance there. Thank you.
What's, what's...
That's the reason we did it, for...
Average max, back to the petitioner, average maximum at your 21 and Van Dyke store?
The...
Stacking.
Typically, how many?
Stacking, yeah.
Five, five.
Is the average?
Do you do the peak service time? It can go up to like seven, eight, or nine.
Okay.
But this site has, I can probably, looking at it, accommodate close to 15, 16.
Yeah, it's more than what I'm showing, but I don't want to make that, you know, I want to just make that an overflow stacking. You know, so I want them to go up if they can. And then if they need more, they still, they have another 100 and some feet, you know, worth of stacking spaces.
Okay.
And another question.
And the bypass lane is maintained.
I know last, at the last meeting, you mentioned you're independently owned, so you have your own regulation on timing. And it was something about three minutes, you want to get whatever the time was from the order to receive your order. And I'm concerned because the Tim Hortons, and I know it's not your location, but at 19 and Hayes, is there's always stacking. And are they operating by different rules? And, you know, you have your own set standard, and that's how you keep it moving. And I'm just looking for assurance here again.
So, Ms. Caselli, what we've done...
Into the microphone, please.
What we've done is actually, we have instituted some of the best practices that even Tim Horton does not, you know, recommend. What we've done is, number one, we have camera, you know, overlooking the drive-through, full visibility of the lane, making sure that at any given time, the drive-through team has full view of the, so that they're, you know, they're pushing the car. And that's number one. Number two, the average speed of service is 32. And we are one of the operator in the state of Michigan that always lead, not only the district, but the state, as far as the speed of service is concerned. And so we're known for actually our, you know, operations, making sure, you know, number one, we meet all the major, the speed of service is, you know, one of our key metrics, okay? Because it also directly relates to the revenues as well. And so we make sure that during the peak service time, which is, you know, 6:00 to 11:00, and those cars, our average window time is about 32. And, you know, that equates to about 80 to 90 cars, you know, seven to 10:30 or so. Okay? So those are some of the best practices to ensure that the traffic is moving.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, now, if the audience wishes, again, to comment on something new that was introduced, I'm happy, you know, you're free to come up and comment.
Good evening. Rick Fast, 46911 Shainer. I am the property owner just south of the proposed rezoning. I don't know what happened last time because I was not here, but I will go over a few items that are important to me, and if it's out of line, let me know.
Okay.
Okay? Fair enough?
Yeah.
First off, he misrepresented himself a couple of times. We had eight people there at 11:00. They both showed up late. No big deal. People have plans, they have life. Second thing is, he just said a minute ago that the first driveway into the subdivision was a quarter mile away. It's 310 feet away, which is about 1,000 feet different from a quarter mile. So he misrepresented himself quite a bit. What he didn't tell you is, he doesn't want to put an entrance and exit on 21 Mile Road because it'll bother the neighbor just to the west side of his property. When we came here in 2006 and we had this conversation, I think, I don't know if you were here or not, but I was, and Maniachi proposed a rezoning from residential to office. We had some complaints, we had some issues, and we worked them all out. And we thought that would be a great, great idea for that particular piece of property. 01 is low volume, low traffic, one-story. The second story would have been just office storage with no windows. These cars that he's proposing are gonna come in, they're gonna be shining at my bedroom and my bathroom. You can't stop that. Traffic is traffic, lights are lights. His main business is from 5:00 to 8:00. We get up at 7:00 to go to work. I'm gonna be listening to this stuff from 5:00 to 7:00. I don't want to do that. And he says the speakers are top-grade, best thing you can get. Everything malfunctions. We know that. I have a problem with the fact that the 01 rezoning had two entrances and two exits. It was really a good idea. Flow in, flow out was nice and easy. People are gonna be turning left into his property the way it is now. They're going to. If you're going north, the only way to get in there is to turn left. If it's only one entrance, you gotta turn right to come out of there. And if you were originally going east to start with, down 21 Mile Road, you're gonna turn down Leadwin at 6:00 and 5:00 and 7:00 in the morning when it's dark, no streetlights, no sidewalks. Our school buses are going up and down there. Kids are standing.
Why would someone going to the Tim Horton's turn on Leadwin before?
Why? If they're going down 21 Mile Road towards Selfridge Air Base?
Yeah.
They gotta turn right on Shainer to get into this place to start with, right? When they come out of there, they gotta turn right. Or you're not gonna let them turn left into the intersection, are you?
Saying, oh, they'll cut through the, they'll cut through the neighborhood?
Right. So like I said, no sidewalks.
Okay. All right.
No streetlights. In the summertime, those kids are playing in the streets, and traffic is gonna definitely be increased. And you can't stop it because people are gonna continue going east, if that's the way they're going. Now, most of the people, he says, will go south. I don't know that. A lot of this stuff, we're guessing. And he says it's based on all these years, he's been doing 300, whatever. I don't know that. All I know is, we get cars in our front yard all the time, without that driveway being less than 100-foot from my driveway, which is less than another 100-foot from the street. It's not a good idea. You all know that's the fifth highest accident corner in Shelby Township. Right now, we've had fatalities there already. You know that. We're gonna increase that problem by allowing this? High volume, 70 to 90 cars an hour?
Now, we're getting into areas that we've covered, so...
He said 100 cars. So my concern is safety first, which I think all yous are interested in also. I don't care how pretty it looks. I'm worried about the kids, the grandkids, the neighbors, the great neighbors, been there forever. We bent over backwards from Maniachi. He represented himself as the owner to me originally. That pissed me off when I found out he wasn't. Don't lie to me. So if he lying to me, is he lying to you? I guess I don't have much more to say than that, but I put it in your... Oh, I was on the planning and zoning in Saraline back in 85. I know you guys got a tough job, and you gotta make some tough decisions. Please, go for the citizens and the neighbors that really care about what you do and what we do. We've been here all our lives. We don't need somebody coming in and changing our life that might be unsafe to everybody and be a bad idea for Shelby, Shelby. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to comment?
Good evening. Oh, my name is Dean Stetich. I live at 13444 Leadwin. I agree with everything Rick said. He lives next door to me. Traffic, it's not just traffic, it's safety.
We talked about traffic, and you were at, you were at the last meeting, and you had the opportunity to, so if you want to comment on something that he's added...
I wanted to comment that I agree with Rick.
That's fine.
That's it?
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, does anyone wish, anyone else wish to comment on what was introduced? Anything new today?
Yeah, I'm Larry Dennewith. I live at Frank's Lane at Shainer, at the 21 Mile Road. I live at Shainer Gardens subdivision. It took me, I think, about one hour one day, I collected 33 signatures I turned in to you. And all we're asking is, this impacts these 33 people. I could've got more, but I didn't go back out. I figured that was sufficient. So I'm just asking the board to do the right thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to comment?
I think I'm gonna do better this time.
Okay.
Colleen Fast, I'm to the south of the proposed petitioner. We all know the traffic. We all know the hazard. What I want to say, the original plan for that specific corner, you can't go back to residential. That would be a disaster. To have a drive-through food service on that corner with everyone knowing the hazards and the safety issues, the only thing you can put there and get the most, the safest of the two property would be office, a nine-to-five, pure traffic. You've all traveled that, that corner. I just don't see where a business that goes from early morning till late night, I think, is good for that corner or anybody else. Office, medical, bank, whatever is on that corner already, I wish you'd reconsider the office going on that property and not a fast food. Thank you.
Thank you. To the planner, your comments?
Thank you, Chairman. This was, I have to admit, this was a difficult review because this was a review that I had to look at both sides as part of economic development and also as part of planning and making sure that the residents were protected. Now, you know, some of the issues that we're talking about is traffic, and there's enough, there is Tim Hortons. There's plenty of Tim Hortons in the township alone. There's one at 23 and Hayes. There's, there's a number of them in the township. Now, to say that somebody is going to travel across from one end of the township to get to this Tim Hortons, they're gonna hit probably two more before they even get to this one. So it's kind of one of those things where it's, it's going to service the traffic that's already there going southbound on Shainer. I truly don't believe that there's going to be a lot of cut-through, making a left-hand turn into this establishment going northbound on Shainer. So as far as that goes, you know, I truly believe it's, it's just gonna be people heading southbound on Shainer. Your proposal, as far as an eight-foot fence, I think that would best serve the residents. There's plenty of screening. The landscape plan is very aggressive, and I had a conversation with the engineer, and I expect every single plant and every single, if the board chooses to approve this, I expect every single plant and every single tree and spruce tree on that property as presented. As far as the stacking lanes on the site itself, there's sufficient parking to stack 14 cars comfortably on this site as it sits right now, without even using a double stacking lane as they presented, because it is the 24-foot wide driveway. So circulation on it works. We did not have any other comments from the fire department or any concerns about that, or from the building department. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. So our recommendation this evening must be based on the following: the practicality of the rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan. Again, we are recommending body will recommend to the township board that'll make the final decision. But what we can do this evening is recommend approval. We could disapprove this request, or we could table it if we believe that there's additional information that we need to make, to render a decision. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Caselli.
I'd just like to say, I think that we're all torn on this decision also. And, you know, we don't have that many properties in the township that are undeveloped, that are left undeveloped at this time. And so I take it very seriously when we have a property that's zoned 01 or zoned whatever, and we're going to offer a rezone. We take that very, it's a very difficult decision on rezoning. And I don't believe that the, I agree with Ms. Misich, I think the traffic, the people that are gonna stop at Tim Hortons are those that are driving south on Shainer. However, you know, we represent the people of the township, and I understand your concerns. And if we kept this zoned 01, we wouldn't have these concerns. And so I, it is a difficult decision for me, but I, I think I'm going to stick with 01 in this case. And I just wanted my opinion to be known before we take a vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I'm gonna move to recommend denial to the township board for conditional rezoning and site plan special land use number twenty-three dash twenty-five Ravinder Saney, four-six-nine-four-seven Shainer Road, located on the southwest corner of Twenty One Mile Road and Shainer Road. Conditional rezoning from O one professional office to C two for a proposed Tim Horton Cafe and Bake Shop with a drive-through for the following reasons. One, the applicant has not demonstrated that the property cannot be developed as currently zoned O one. The development has the potential to create nuisances for the residents who are living in the surrounding area. And three, this development has the potential to increase public safety concerns on both Twenty One Mile Road and Shainer Roads.
Is there support?
Support.
Support.
Support by Meredith?
Sir.
Uh, any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
No.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Larray?
No.
And the chair votes no. So we have a three-three vote, and it'll be recorded to the township board as a...
No recommendation.
As no recommendation. So, all right. Thank you all for participating.
Thank you.
So I jumped the gun. I was so anxious to talk about Tim Hortons that I forgot that the Charter Township of Washington is... Has a draft master plan that we're supposed to look at, or at least acknowledge that we've received and filed it.
Move to receive and file.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is site plan rezoning, special land use number two-three dash two-six Paul Dungeon for Lawson Creek Shops. I will ask the secretary to read the notices published.
Thank you.
Should I read it? Start?
Charter Township of Shelby Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following conditional rezoning and site plan special land use. Applicant Lawson Creek Shops LLC, Paul Dungeon, five-one-four-six-two Shainer Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, four-eight-three-one-five. Proposed zoning and use is conditional rezoning from C one to C two and site plan special land use for two multi-tenant retail buildings and drive-through restaurant. Location is five-five-four-six-zero, five-five-four-three-zero, and five-five-four-hundred Van Dyke Avenue plus two vacant parcels north of Twenty Five Mile Road, east of Van Dyke Avenue. Conditional rezoning petition and site plan special land use number twenty-three dash twenty-six. Sidwell numbers twenty-three zero-seven zero-three three-zero-three zero-zero-four, twenty-three zero-seven zero-three three-zero-zero, three-zero-three zero-zero-five, twenty-three zero-seven zero-three three-zero-three zero-one-three, twenty-three zero-seven zero-three three-zero-three zero-one-four, and twenty-three zero-seven zero-three three-zero-three dash zero-zero-seven. The legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM in the Shelby Township Municipal Building, Boardroom five-two-seven-zero-zero Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, four-eight-three-one-six, five-eight-six-seven-two-six-seven-two-four-three, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the conditional rezoning application and site plan special land use. The application for the conditional rezoning and site plan specialty and land use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building Monday through Friday from eight-thirty AM to five PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act one-one-zero of two thousand six as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission Jerome Moffett, Chair, Riquelmoor Secretary. One hundred and thirty property owners and three applicants were notified by first-class mail on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Great. Thank you. Um, so the format for the public hearing, please, follows. The petitioner or representative will come up, state what they're requesting, their reasons for it. I'll then bring it back to the board to offer any questions or comments for the petitioner. I'll then open up to the public, offer any comments. I'll record any questions you may have. I'll then bring the petitioner back up to address those questions. It's not a debate. It's really just more of a fact-finding for us to sort of get both sides of the issue of what's being requested and make a recommendation to the township board, who ultimately will make the final decision. With that, anyone who speaks, I need a name and an address. When you're done speaking, then sign in. So proceed, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Delislawis Noah and Fraus, four-eight-six-eight-zero, Van Dyke, Shelby Township, representing the applicant. Is a civil engineer this evening. The plan was submitted for rezone to C two from a C one zoning, and the proposal for site plan approval of three uses. One would be a standalone fast-food use with a drive-through on a separate parcel, three thousand square foot building, and then two retail buildings, one with a drive-through, both around eighty-five hundred square feet each. The site has ample parking, no variances required in that regard. We've also reduced the amount of drive approaches along Van Dyke from three to two. And the applicant does look forward to cleanup of the site, which we understand to this point has not been in the finest shape. We do request your recommendation for approval on both the rezoning and the site plan, and free to answer any questions you may have on the plan.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so the standalone, although I never knew the chicken fingers were such a big deal, but it's like all over the world now. They're blowing up. The second drive-through, though, so folks are gonna enter, have to loop around the building to gain access to that? Like, I mean, it seems awkward if they're... So if they're pulling in, it looks like if they're pulling in by the... What's the cute name of that restaurant? Slim Chickens, yeah. If they're pulling in off of Van Dyke, and they go, okay, they wanna go to, you know, whatever coffee shop or you put on the end lot. They're gonna have to come in, they're gonna have to run down there, loop around the back, and then make a left turn to come back up and through. I mean, it just seems awkward, and it seems
Well, we've been in centers, if I can comment on that.
That works. Yeah.
Where it's not always direct, you're in, and then you're automatically in that line. There is a decision.
Well, I get it. But that's... I mean, that seems to be a bit of a, like, you know, cross-country excursion to get... I mean, it seems a little bit more involved to get there than...
Sure. And if you are going there, it would seem that if you're turning left off of Van Dyke into this site, you probably wouldn't use the Slim Chickens entrance, which would have their sign there and maybe be more aligned with their use. You would use the southerly entrance. Now, the nice thing is, we did make that connection point, two of them, in front and in back. So if you accidentally did turn in there, or it was easier for you, you could certainly pass around. I know the other retail users would probably like the fact that people would travel by their storefront on their way to another use. But in terms of other options that we had for that drive-through, this was the optimal one on those retail buildings.
That's less of a concern to me, that you optimize, than, you know, that impact. Because there are some houses in that, behind that, you know? And so now folks are gonna... I mean, it's a distance away, granted, but now that, those lights are gonna be coming, depending what that use is. I don't know what that use is gonna be. But because you're asking for this rezoning, I mean, it's... The standard's a little higher, because now we're putting...
Sure.
You know, that's allowing for that drive-through there. That's, I guess, why I'm kind of begging. I'm a little more focused on that. So even so, if they're gonna go whatever the normal way, either way, you know, their lights are gonna be shining. They're gonna come around there. It's just, I guess, something to consider. Are you planning on phasing... Is your client planning on phasing this, or are you gonna build everything all at once?
The idea would be to build all at once.
Build it all at once. Have tenants for the...
That I do not know. I know there was at least one for the drive-through use, but I'm not sure on the others.
Okay. So the two drive-through uses are set?
Yeah. Slim Chickens is clearly interested in that piece. And then for the other, I know that there was an interest in the northernmost unit, which is the drive-through, but I'm not sure on the others. But they're obviously set up for a food service establishment in the central area because there is an outdoor seating option available to them.
Oh, right. Right, right, right. The... From what we could tell from the elevations on the Slim Chickens, there we go. I got it. It seems a bit aggressive, cluttered, not... I mean, it's... There's... Seems to be a lot going on from what we could tell, and I really couldn't tell from colors. I guess my question is gonna be... Or I'll ask... Expect some comments from the planner as to signage. What signage is allowed? You know, are they exceeding that by... And again, this, I mean, I don't know if this... These are the exact elevations from what we're seeing. If that's the case, then it's a little lacking, you know, that I can't really tell. So I guess I'll ask you to weigh in on that. If you wanna weigh on that, or this is just what the client, you know, their spec, this is what they go for, and I guess how that's gonna impact. Less worried about the issue, you know, because it's not like there's a cluster of fast foods. That'd have a little different issue in that area. But I also don't want, don't think that it should be kind of over-the-top bells and whistles and, you know, firecrackers and things going, you know? That's really drawing attention to it, which, you know, I get that's what they're... What they exist to do. You have a little different charge. Okay. I've rambled enough. I'll ask Mr. Turner, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, when you talked about the rendering, I thought the word you were gonna mention, "Mr. Chairman," was boring. And certainly, if this is a firecracker, it's kind of a dud. I'm looking at the building itself, and it looks like we've got a small band of brick. What's the rest of it made out of? Vinyl siding, metal siding, wood, weatherboard? What is it? It seems like we could do a little more to add a little more brick accent onto the elevation. The other building, that's your... The other two buildings look great in comparison to this. So that's just a comment I would have, Mr. Chairman.
My comments were more on all the verbiage that's on the building.
I agree with you. That looks cluttered, too. Yes.
There we go. Okay.
So that would be my recommendation comment to the petitioner. Take back, do a little more. I'm not gonna tell you how to design it, but I think there are some areas here where you could add some brick accents, some kind of stone accents to make it look a little more in line with your other two buildings, which look nice in comparison.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casali.
The... To answer that question, I see from the drawings that it... The other materials are cement board. So... But I do think we could increase the brick on the whole building and make it a little more appropriate for what we like to see in Shelby Township.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this was... Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this request. All remarks will be entered into the board, into the record for Township Board evaluation. As I mentioned before, we are recommending body. Ultimately, whatever we recommend will be presented to the Township Board, and they will make the final decision on this request. At this time, anyone is free to come up and offer a comment, ask any questions of what's being proposed. The only thing is, again, I would need your name and address. See, now the guys were chomping at the bit to yell at me. Nobody here? Going once, twice? I'll bring it back to the board and ask the planner for her comments.
Thank you, Chairman. As far as the master plan goes, this is zoned for mixed residential, but what they are asking for is consistent with that quarter and what we've approved more recently with the C two and drive-through facilities. The residential district to the east is very well protected with the berm that is proposed and plantings on top of the berm. So it's in line with what we've recently approved as well on this site. I really don't have any too many more comments on this. We did a preliminary review. I ironed out all the site plan comments. There are no variances required for this site. They've addressed the special land use standards. Other than, like you spoke about, is the facade for the Slim Chickens. I would like to perhaps see maybe more brick facade. As far as the signage is concerned, they would be allowed one wall sign for that, for that building.
It's about seventeen, I think.
Anything at fifty, fifty square feet. Anything beyond that would require Zoning Board of Appeals approval. That's a separate application, as you know, John. But other than that, as far as the ground sign, I'm not sure what you're planning on doing. If it's a ground sign that services just the entire center, you would only be permitted one ground sign. If you are going to be splitting off that parcel for the Slim Chickens, then you would be allowed two ground signs. They could have their own, and one could service the retail center itself.
Okay. Thank you. It's a fine, it's a fine proposal. I don't have so much of an issue with it. You know, even, you know, people figure out the drive-through, you know? Lazy is lazy, so. But I would like to see the elevation of the Slim Chickens before. I would make a recommendation. Something colored, something a little more, more real. And then again, as my colleagues have pointed out, with more, with more brick or stone, some natural materials is sort of suited for our community and like communities. So any... Oh, is there motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any final questions from anyone for the petitioner? Okay. Thank you. A recommendation this evening must be based on the following: the petitioner... Get the right thing. The practicality of rezoning request and effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan. We can recommend approval. We could disapprove, or we can table to evaluate the information Does anyone... What's that table?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casali.
I move to table the, uh, the motion to the Township Board for site plan SLU twenty-three dash twenty-six Paul Dungeon, Lawson Creek Shops LLC, five-five-four-six-zero, five-five-four-three-zero, and five-five-four-hundred Van Dyke Avenue and two vacant parcels located north of Twenty Five Mile Road on the east side of Van Dyke Avenue. Conditional rezoning for a C one local retail business to C two linear retail business, and special land use for a proposed multi-tenant retail building and drive-through restaurant based on the following. We would like to review color renderings of a new Slim Chickens facade and elevation at our next meeting.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Call the roll. Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay. Thanks. I've been waiting and waiting and waiting. I've bated breath. Did you just sneak in? Can you... What's it? Oh, the beat? What?
We need to revise that she's here, or...
Well, yeah. Well, what the record reflects. But when you show up, I just, I mean...
Couple minutes after we started.
Are you really? What'd I say? Wow. I'm getting old. No arguments from anyone. Okay, sorry. Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Okay.
Jerry, we don't have her vote on the other one either.
What?
We don't have her vote on the other one.
The one on what?
The Tim Hortons.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. It was three of three.
Who knows?
Oh, were you here for that one?
I don't have her written down.
Oh, there's seven of us here. So what did you vote?
I didn't know you were here. No, I just noticed that you were here right now.
Four, five, six, seven. Uh-oh. Yeah, there's seven of us.
No, no, she wasn't, because I didn't know. I just now, just now noticed that you were here, so.
I apologize. I would've voted yes, if you need my vote onto the, onto the first.
To deny the request.
Correct. Oh, boy.
You gotta earn your money today. Imagine that.
I think you can call the vote again. We're at the same meeting at this time.
Okay. Um, okay. So I did call you on the, this last one. All right. So I'm gonna recall the roll for the conditional rezoning and site plan special land use two-three dash two-five. That motion was made by Turner, right? So, Mr. Turner?
Want me to read the motion again?
Yeah, why don't you? Yeah, why don't you?
All right. I move to recommend denial to the township board, hold on, wrong one, for conditional rezoning and site plan special land use number 23-25 Ravinder Saney, 46947 Shainer Road, located on the southwest corner of 21 Mile Road and Shainer Road. Conditional rezoning from O1 professional office to C2 linear retail business. Proposed Tim Horton's Cafe and Bake Shop with a drive-through based on the following. One, the applicant has not demonstrated that the parcel cannot be developed as currently zoned O1. Two, the development has the potential to create nuisances for residents in the abutting area. Three, the development has the potential to increase public safety concerns on both 21 Mile Road and Shainer Roads.
Support.
Okay, so support, motion by Turner, support by Meredith. I will call the roll now. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Still no.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
No.
And the chair votes no, but the motion to recommend denial is no, will now be forwarded. Julie, do you want to call, call the petitioner and let him know? How come nobody said nothing when I didn't call your name?
I didn't notice. I didn't.
I hit him.
We're all sleeping down here.
What's that? I was just dazzled by Mr. Snyder's smile and I just couldn't see beyond, all right. Zoning ordinance amendments.
Mr. Chairman, you were, you were too busy telling those people to relax and tell them about stuff we had already heard.
Yeah, yeah, I was getting, I was getting a little worked up, I know. It happens, it happens. Zoning ordinance amendments. Seeing as I'm not the only one that screws up to the planner.
Do it all the time. So go ahead, Mr., I, I know the feeling.
The attached zoning ordinance amendments are proposed for 20, for this year, for 2023. They include temporary signs redefined in the definitions of the zoning ordinance, also commercial use of property redefined in the definitions of the zoning ordinance. Home occupation is also redefined in the definitions of the zoning ordinance. And we have a temporary sign, just the temporary sign ordinance modified in this section. We will be holding a public hearing at the next Planning Commission meeting, maybe the Planning Commission afterwards. There was a technical error on the publication on this notice, so we will make sure that at the next meeting, we will hold a public hearing. But meanwhile, if you want to take a look at that and review it, if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to give me a call on, on the amendments.
Excellent, thank you. Who knew that, so that people rent their pools? Do you guys know that? Is that, that's a thing?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I live in my, I live under a rock. I guess I travel too much, I don't see it. All right, so that, there's no need for a motion there because we're going to put that down the road. We do have business from the floor. If anyone here wants to yell at us for three minutes, you're welcome to. Nope, I see, no one's, no one's running up, so...
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.
Oh, one more thing, one more thing before you guys let me go, sorry. My apologies. So we provided to you the packets like we did before in paper and digitally. So I guess I would like the board's decision on how you want it. Either we do it digitally, we do packets, or we do a partial packet where we just give you the plans in 11 by 17, the day of the meeting.
Well, seeing as I'm, I'm never able to download the plan, that I can look at it on my phone and/or even iPad that...
We, we don't have a problem. We can do the packets like we used to do before, but that's all we're gonna do. We're not gonna send it out digitally because...
Why?
You want it both ways?
Do we have it digitally anyway?
Well, that's the thing, it's, it's just creating more work. Yeah, it's double, double the efforts.
All right, can we, can we get the, the, the report provided that they're done? You know, that electronically and then just the maps? Because that's the, that's the only issue I have, is getting the, getting the maps that I can download them and look at them.
So a partial...
They don't even download to me, so I have no choice, but, you know...
So you want a partial packet? So the partial packet will include the plans?
Yeah.
And the rest of the documentation will be digital?
There we go.
Is that good?
There we go.
Okay.
Is that fair? Yeah, I think it's the oversize where we have issues with being able to look on, on, yeah, so...
Okay. That's no problem.
Is that, is that fair to anyone? No objections?
Digital to review ahead.
If, if that's what you like, Bob, we can still send you the plans.
See a layout or something rather than by the time I get my packet, so...
Right, right.
Will the packets be picked up at the police station or at the meeting?
The police station, like they were available before, yeah. You would be able to pick them up at the police station.
All right. So if it's not too much of a burden, if you could also add the, for Mr. Kirk, the site plan. Lord knows he doesn't get paid enough to...
I read slow.
Yeah. All right, so you're clear?
Yes.
At least one of us is.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.
Is there support?